Participated on the agenda or present can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Erfran Nasrula.
Nasrula here.
Brian Herr.
Herr here.
Mary Jo Lefrenier.
Lefrenier here.
Amy Ritterbush.
Unmuted.
Brendan Tedstone is here. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Uh, Mr. Kamalu, Mr. Norman Kamalu.
I'm here.
Okay, Ms. Elaine Lazarus.
I am here.
Thank you. Additional speakers this evening may include Tom Garabedian and Connor Deegan. If there is anyone attending who would like to speak during the public forum of this agenda, you must notify the host in advance. You may do so now by using the raise hand feature of Zoom. As a preliminary matter, this is Brendan Tedstone, Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Actually, I've already, that's twice on there. So the introduction to the remote meeting. This open meeting of the Hopkinen Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor Baker's executive order for March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we're complying with the executive orders that suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The executive order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as the public body makes provisions through adequate alternative means to ensure interested members of the public are provided reasonable access to the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom webinar, as posted on the town's web meeting calendar and the board's agenda identifying how the public may join. Additionally, the meeting may also be broadcast by HCAM through one of its many channels or platforms. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some of the meetings and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that others may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will invite board members to participate. I'm sorry, will, will invite board members to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your mic, your phone, or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Not every agenda item will feature public comment for public forum of the, I'm sorry, for the public forum portion of the agenda. The chair will work with the meeting host to call each, on each pre-registered speaker to make their comment. Each speaker must begin by identifying their name and address. Each speaker will have up to two minutes for their comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Pledge of allegiance. Let's stand and recite the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, justiciable. Okay, so next is public forum. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak? If so, please identify yourself by name and address first. Josh, has anyone, has anybody, uh, so we'll have Erfran go first, but has anyone else previously identified themselves?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yes, we have one person who's being promoted to panelist now, Anne.
Okay, so I'm gonna let Erfran go first, and then Anne can go that, and then we're all done.
Thank you. My name is Erfran Nasrula, 211 Winter Street. Last week, I read two emails that the Select Board had received. I read the words of the authors. Those were not my words. Today, I would like to share my words relative to the accusations made in those emails. I believe the accusations were at best misleading and at worst disinformation. The emails accused Ms. Kramer of releasing a dangerous criminal back onto the street. That is not accurate. While it is true that Ms. Kramer holds a title of treasurer for the bail fund, her role as treasurer is more akin to that of an auditor. She oversees the books for the bail fund, but does not have a say in who gets bailed out and who does not. She is not involved in the day-to-day operations. To accuse her of releasing dangerous criminals onto the street and calling for her to resign is entirely inappropriate. In my opinion, if the, if the authors have an issue, the appropriate course of action is to contact the bail fund and work with them to better vet who gets bail and what type of security measures should be in place. To call for Ms. Kramer's resignation is a type of knee-jerk reaction that doesn't resolve the issues complained of and is not conducive to civil discourse on an important subject. While I take no view for or against the bail fund, I do see arguments in, both in favor and against. This is particularly true in light of the fact that the day after I read those emails at the Select Board meeting, Steve Bannon was indicted on alleged $300 million fraud case, and he was able to post $3 million in bail to gain his freedom. So the question in my mind is freedom, the question in my mind is, is freedom while under indictment reserved only for those who have deep pockets? As I said, calling for Ms. Kramer's resignation in the light of the tragic events will not resolve the issue, will only smear the name of the person was worked diligently in the best interests of Hopkinen. Lastly, I want to add that it is entirely irresponsible not to separate what we as volunteers do in our private lives, either through work or advocacy in, in important issues from our work for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Erfran. Anne, you're next.
I think she's muted.
Yeah, she's muted. I've got it. Thank you. This is Anne Matina, 40 Eastview Road. I just would, um, kind of to follow up on with what Mr. Nasrula just said, I thought the decision made last week to grant anonymity to the people seeking to publicly chastise an elected official for a matter which had nothing to do with her town position was a poor one. It did not follow standard protocol that people state their name and address when participating in the public comments section. Also, it undermined and demeaned the process of local governance in that it was a clearly coordinated attack on Ms. Kramer's character with calls for her resignations from the planning board and which became part of the public record and gave her no opportunity for rebuttal or defense. Finally, the reasoning that some of the commentators were at risk by speaking out is ludicrous. Instead, the whole event seems to have put Ms. Kramer and her family in danger, and my question is, to what end? Who does this benefit? Not the town at all, because other citizens will be reluctant to put themselves out there as volunteers or candidates. I believe Hopkinen deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so moving on. So, let's see.
Consent.
Well, we're gonna do the consent agenda. The board will consider approving the consent agenda considering of, number one, approving the minutes of the August 4th, 2020 Select Board meeting, and number two, accepting the resignation of Henry Kunicki from the CPC. Would anyone like to pull one item out for a separate vote? Hearing none. Okay, I will request a motion to approve the consent agenda item as written. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna thank Henry for, he's done a lot of work for the town over the years in many different boards and organizations, and I just wanna thank him for his time to go to Doppington.
Good job. Thank you, Mary Jo.
And I don't know if I should note here, I sent one small change to the minutes to Elaine, which I think she made that change.
Okay, thank you. So I will, so we've, we've had a motion, it's been seconded, so we'll do a roll call vote. How do you vote? Mr. Nasrula?
Nasrula, yes.
Mr. Herr?
Herr, yes.
Ms. Lefrenier?
Lefrenier, yes.
Ms. Ritterbush?
Ritterbush, yes.
Mr. Tedstone, yes. Okay, moving forward. 2020 Annual Town Meeting, the Select Board will consult with Tom Garabedian, Town Moderator, and discuss a reduction in the required quorum for the annual town meeting. Mr. Garabedian, you're present, correct? Josh, is Mr. Garabedian here? And if he is, could you liven his mic up, please?
Yeah, he's been promoted to panelist.
Okay, Mr. Garabedian, you're present?
He is muted.
Tom, I'm here.
Present. Yes, I am present.
Thank you, Mr. Garabedian. The state legislators have made it possible for municipalities to reduce the required quorum that would, I'm sorry, for annual town meetings during the COVID-19 state of emergency, um, to as low as 10% of the number that would normally be required. Hopkinen's quorum requirement, under normal circumstances, is 1% of the number of registered voters in town as of December 31st, uh, of the most recent year, ending in a two or seven as determined by the town clerk, which is 117. The allowable reduction would mean we could lower it to as low as 12. Mr. Nasrula, um, you can announce that you're leaving.
I can stick around for a couple more minutes, but I'll be leaving in about five minutes.
All right, let me take my phone off of train whistle when I get a text, please. So you don't have to be subjected to that. Today's discussion follows last Tuesday's review of the question to reduce the required quorum for the annual town meeting between the Select Board and the Town Moderator. During that discussion, the Town Moderator suggested that the board could consider reducing the quorum by 25% to 85, to 90, due to public health concerns. Mr. Kamalu, do you wanna walk us through this?
Yes, um, through the chair. One of the requirements from the state law regarding this discussion is that a notice be posted prior to this meeting. This did happen. We did post the notice seven days before, so the public has been notified of the discussion. And also tactically, as you mentioned, the Select Board and the Town Moderator did have an informal discussion on the topic a week ago, giving advanced warning to the public that this discussion will be okay informally today. So I just wanted to highlight this point, that there has been adequate notice to the public. We have tried to, uh, broadcast the message as widely as possible that this decision will be made today, as well as updating the board that in my most recent discussions with the Town Moderator, he did suggest that the quorum could be reduced down to 80, 80.
80, okay. Mr. Garabedian, you're good with that?
Yes, I am. Yeah, well, I do expect that we'll, you know, we, we probably will not need that reduction. It will be helpful, um, in the event of unusual circumstances, that we have enough people to be able to start the meeting promptly at 9:30 on September 12. And I think, uh, in terms of the flexibility it extends to us, it's well worth undertaking this temporary reduction.
Yep, totally in agreement. Board, do you have any, any thoughts on this? Mr. Uh, Mr. Nasrula?
Yes, Mr. Garabedian, if, if you think that it's not gonna be necessary to go down to 80, that we'll have more than 80 people, um, for safety's sake, could we, would you be okay with going down to, say, 25 people if we're fully expecting more than 80?
I'd, I'd be reluctant. I mean, I think the optics of, uh, in the worst instance, the optics of 25 people making decisions for the town, including the expenditure of somewhere between 80 and 90 million dollars, to me, that would be, would feel inappropriate. So I'd prefer to keep it at a, at a more substantial number. Again, the expectation is we'll have more than our usual quorum, but, uh, this is just to provide a little flexibility.
Well, I'm willing to go by what you think is appropriate here.
Thank you. Mr. Herr, do you have anything?
I just wanna confirm the number is 80, 80, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
I'm fine, thanks.
Ms. Lefrenier?
I'm fine with the quorum of 80. I'm a little apprehensive about the articles that take two-thirds. You know, if we have a good count, that's, uh, we need 80 for that.
Ms. Ritterbush?
I'm comfortable with 80, but I think we won't have trouble getting the usual quorum.
Okay, and I, Mr. Tedstone is also, uh, comfortable with the 80. So that being said, um, I will request a motion to sign the, wait a minute, I'll make sure I'm on the right spot here. I will request a motion, request a motion pursuant to Section 7 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020 to reduce the required quorum for the 2020 Annual Town Meeting from the number calculated pursuant to Article 47-13 of the General Bylaws, uh, to the town to no less than 80, 80, and further direct the town clerk to notify the Attorney General of the adjusted quorum requirement as required by Section 7 of Chapter 92. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. How do you vote? Mr. Nasrula?
Nasrula, yes.
Mr. Herr?
Herr, yes.
Ms. Lefrenier?
Lefrenier, yes.
Ms. Ritterbush?
Ritterbush, yes.
Mr. Tedstone, yes. So tonight, the board will review the draft warrant and will assign the annual town meeting warrant. Mr. Kamalu, have there been any changes to the draft warrant that was in our meeting?
Before we, before we continue, uh, Mr. Chair, I need to leave, so, uh...
All right, thank you. I appreciate you making the effort to get here in the first place. I know you had a very busy night, so, thank you, Mr. Nasrula.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. All right, carrying on, Mr. Kamalu?
Yes, um, through the chair. Included in your pocket on Friday was the draft warrant and the draft motions document. In terms of the warrant, the warrant document that was shared on Friday had 23 articles. We're now down to 21 articles, and here's how we got there. There were two specific articles regarding approval of union contracts. Upon further review by both Town Council and Labor Council, it has been decided that the town meeting vote on those two articles will not be necessary, and we have therefore removed them from the warrant. And again, the big change being we're down to 21 from 23 after the removal of those two articles.
Good job. So, uh, so what do you need from us, Mr. Nasrula? The motion?
We're, we're looking for a motion where the board will formally approve the warrant and agree to sign the warrant for distribution. However, my suggestion is that perhaps the board could defer that motion until we get to the, get through the motions documents. The board may decide to remove one of his articles, financial articles, after reviewing the motions.
And can, I ask, the growth study committee is meeting later tonight to decide if they're gonna remove their article. Will that be too late then? Because we have to vote on it prior.
Um, no. The board vote may also be contingent or subject to the decision of the growth study.
Okay, great.
All right, so, Mr. Kamalu, I am up at my cabin up in Maine, and I have very limited bandwidth here. The only thing I have in front of me right now is the, uh, the script that I got a bit earlier. So are you asking us to, uh, make a motion that the town meeting approve? Are we gonna, how, how do we move forward on this?
Yes, here's how we move forward. I'm asking that the board defer making the motion on the warrant now until we complete the review of the motions, which means that right after this, with your permission, the board can move into, uh, reviewing the motions document.
Okay, that's fine. So we need a motion to...
No, we don't need a motion at this point.
All right, so we're, so what are we doing? We're moving on?
Yeah, moving on to motions document, it's still under one item. We included three items under the annual town meeting. There was the vote on the reduction of the quorum, then there's the vote on the warrant, and there'll be a vote on the motions. So what I'm saying is, hold of making the vote on the warrant, then there will be, the board will now move on to discuss the motions. And at the end of that discussion, the board can make two motions. One motion approving to sign the warrant, and then a motion on the, the board's positions on the different motions that your action is required.
Okay, so I don't have anything, I don't have any of those motions, so, and with Mr. Nasrula not there as my chair, as my vice, uh, and Mr. Herr driving, is there somebody either, uh, Ms. Lefrenier or Ms. Ritterbush that would be, uh, that would be good at reading?
I'm happy to do it, or if Mary Jo feels like it.
Are we reading each of the articles?
We, now I'm moving on to the motions document. We're gonna go through the motions.
Okay.
And the new one you just, or the...
Yes, please refer to the new ones that were circulated.
Today? Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, why don't we have Mr. Kamalu just read each of the motions to us, and then we can discuss it, and we'll do the next one after that.
That works for me. Does that work for you, Mr. Kamalu?
Works for me.
All right, there you go. Well, you're on.
Thank you. The, the first motion is FY 2020 supplemental appropriations and transfers. Specifically, the motion is to move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $62,000 from certified free cash to supplement the FY 2020 snow and ice control operating budgets. This is a motion that will be moved by the Appropriations Committee. We're simply looking for the Select Board's recommendation.
So, um, so I guess we'll go in the roll call style as we've been going, right? Mr. Herr, do you have anything on this?
Purely administrative, I'll get it.
Okay. Uh, so why don't we, uh, Mr. Na, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Kamalu, is it appropriate if rather than us do a roll call, uh, vote on each of these, uh, motions, uh, if we will, um, if we could go by exception, if we have an issue, we will bring it up? We'll assume it's okay unless it's, uh, unless there's an exception?
Elaine, I, I believe we received specific recommendation from Town Council on this.
Yeah, so it's recommended that the motion, uh, perhaps there'd be one motion where you list the article numbers at the end of your discussion that you are voting to recommend. The other option would be to vote on them individually.
Okay.
Call, call votes, it could be more tedious.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have too many that we're gonna have any kind of disagreement on, so I think we should just try and do it all at one time at the end. Let's do a straw poll right now and kick tabs, and whatever ones come up at the end, we deal with it.
Yes, I'd recommend this first one we put on the list that we will recommend.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep, so there we go, four out of four.
All right.
Unpaid bills from previous fiscal year. We move that the town vote to transfer from the Sua Enterprise retained earnings the sum of $5,497.32 from certified free cash and $44.93 from Water Enterprise retained earnings for the following bills incurred in a previous year in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 64 of MGL. Water, Sua Enterprise Fund, EverSource Electric for $1,662.52. Sua Enterprise Fund, White Water as the vendor, $3,834.80. Employee benefits, Midlysex County Retirement, $6,385.73. Information Technology from Verizon, $875.41. Employee benefits, Blue Cross Blue Shields of Massachusetts, $3,141.54. Facilities, uh, format equipment, $3,099.82. Holystone Oil Service, $364.60. BCM Controls Corporation, $1,036.00. EverSource Gas, $1,776.3. TRC Companies, $2,455.90. Radiant Cleaning, $2,594.80. Boiler Equipment, $2,167.64. Tree Warden, Stanley Tree Service, $2,970. Waste Collection, Chase Harisceptic Corporation, $300 bucks. Water Enterprise Fund, Verizon, $44.93, for a total of $59,704.32.
So I'd recommend that we add this to one of the items that we recommend. Approval?
I agree.
Second.
Okay, next one, excess bond premiums. Uh, this has been a, a feature in our warrant and motions document, I think, for the last three years. Uh, the motion to be moved by the Appropriations Committee, we move that the town vote to appropriate $39,353.66 from the remaining net premium paid to the town upon the sale of the town's $9,175,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2019 bonds dated November 26, 2019, and $9,500, $500,000 from the general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2020 bonds dated June 25, 2020, to the following capital projects of the town and to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for such projects, but not yet issued by the town by the same amount pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 20. Following amounts, $2,926 DPW bucket truck, $451.71 DPW tractor, $1,641 comprehensive wastewater management plan, $1,472.73 school bus parking lot construction, $4,073.28 public safety software upgrade, $587.48 school security cameras, $65.97 land acquisition town hall parking lot, $3,258.43 Grove Street tank, $105.23 Midlyschool auditorium, $1,624.34 library construction, $381.40 school facilities district-wide improvements, $314.99 Hayden Row water main replacement, $31.35 Cedar Street water main replacement, $373.00 Main Street corridor project, $557.38 campus master plan study, Phase 1 school bus parking, $2,549.5 technology upgrades, $3,946.9, Tefield's project, $2,468.68 Tefield's projects, $4,485.23 Hopkinen High School expansion, $4,544.00 Elwood School installation of modular classrooms, $3,646.32 Hopkins School installation of modular classrooms, for a sum of excess premiums of $39,353.66.
Mr. Chair, in the interest of time, as we go through some of these articles, which are, or motions, which are obviously administrative in nature, we don't need every $38 line item, uh, kinda read out, I don't think. Let's just try and move this along if we could.
So just because I think that's a little confusing to the public, what is an excess bond premium? It's, it's just, we gotta, um, we had to pay less than we thought, or...
Got a question, Amy?
I guess, could you just, could you give like a one-sentence explanation of excess bond premium for people listening at home that don't know? Or is it too complicated?
No, I, I, I can summarize, I think, I, I, what I've received from, uh, Tim O'Leary, I don't know, Tim, Tim, if you're online, uh, he's, he's given me the best explanation. It's a premium that is assigned to, uh, any borrowing, and we have an option to either you take that money included in our borrowing and apply it to any other project, or reduce the amount of the borrowing by that amount.
So we're reducing the amount of borrowing? Correct?
Yes, that has been the, the advice now from our finance team.
Okay, great. No objections for me.
So, Mr. Kamalu, are you good with, uh, sparing us the gory details on any of these other ones, please?
I think the other ones are shorter.
Yeah, yeah. We went through the longer list.
You're putting my life at risk as I drive down the road listening to some of these numbers.
Well, I'm suggesting that we add three to the list that we are approving.
Okay, so yeah, I agree, we should approve an article.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, personal property. Uh, the motion is to move that the town vote to amend its vote taken on May two, twenty sixteen at the annual town meeting through which the town accepted the provisions of chapter fifty nine, section five, clause fifty fourth of MGLs and established a minimum value of personal property subject to taxation in the amount of one thousand dollars by modifying the threshold minimum value for personal property subject to taxation to two thousand five hundred dollars for all fiscal years beginning on or after July one, twenty twenty. So put simply, upping that amount from one thousand to two thousand five hundred dollars.
I'm good with that.
So this recommends residents with uh, low, small numbers of assets, right? It just increases it a little bit. So.
Yeah, actually, it's, it's not assessing personal property uh, under two thousand five hundred dollars anymore, it's just not cost effective.
Yeah.
towns have brought it up to that, so.
Yeah, and it benefits people that have small number of assets.
Benefit, yeah, benefits a small in-home. You know, businesses, things like that.
Okay, I, sounds good to me.
Okay, so it's on the list?
Yes.
On the list, moving on.
Setting the salary.
Master.
Uh, that's the town clerk and the salary that we are proposing effective July one, twenty twenty is seventy one thousand three hundred and eighty five dollars.
Okay, what was his salary last year?
He's, I, I'll look it up, I can come back to the board with an answer to that question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like sixty eight or sixty nine?
Yeah, it sounds right.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Next.
Next.
Yeah. The operating budget. General fund to be set at ninety two million eight hundred and thirteen seven hundred and ninety five. Community Innovation Fund, three hundred and eighty thousand and three cents. Sewer Enterprise Fund, a two million seven hundred and fifty one three eighty five. Water Enterprise Fund, a three million hundred, one hundred and sixty four thousand hundred and sixty four. And then Park and Rec Enterprise Fund at seven hundred and one thousand eight hundred and fifty one. And then the PEG Access Enterprise Budget at five hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty seven.
We don't have any wiggle room there anyways, right, Norman?
At this point in the budget process, correct?
Right.
Has appropriations kind of confirmed all those numbers, Norman?
I, I believe, yes, they have, and in fact, at the last meeting, they were finalizing the appropriations committee report that submitted to town meeting and it's based on these numbers.
Okay.
Did find the town clerk salary from last year, it was um, sixty nine two ninety seven twenty cents.
So what's that increase, two percent?
Two grand.
Well, it's increasing to seventy one, so about two thousand.
Next.
Yeah.
Moving on.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna, oh, all right, on seven and add it to the list.
Yep.
Okay, and then revolving fund spending limit, um, no changes from past years. We recommend that the board support this.
Good, moving on.
Okay.
Chapter ninety highway funds, uh, we are receiving six hundred, six hundred and thirty nine thousand seven hundred and one from the state and we're asking that the town vote to appropriate that amount purely for transparency and administrative, not required legally.
Good.
Sounds good.
Moving on.
Uh, as discussed through the budget process, we are asking the select board to recommend um, transferring from general free cash the sum of four hundred thousand dollars to all people.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. And then that's, those are the budget items. The next one is the East Main Street Parcel for International Marathon Center. As you know, the board did approve the twenty six point two foundation as the uh, winning bid for leasing uh, a parcel on East Main Street for ninety nine years. We're finalizing the lease negotiations and we're taking this list to town meeting for approval.
Good.
But do we know what the, do we know the terms yet, or we'll know them before town meeting?
Yeah, the board will, will get the opportunity to review the terms of the listed town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, next.
Okay, I think in terms of what is required for the board, we're done on the financials.
A CPC, do we have?
CPC.
What vote is not requi- recommendation is not required?
Says recommended, though.
Which is recommended, okay.
Yeah, says recommended.
Oh.
On Article eleven.
Could be a typo, but uh, says recommended.
Yeah. Okay, we, we will do that, I was looking at the subsequent ones where select board recommendations not required. Okay, CPC recommendation and these are the general administrative transfers. Um. Estimated revenues for active and passive recreation at one forty one thousand and eighty four. Historic resources reserved at one forty one and eighty four. Uh, community housing reserve at one forty one zero eight four, uh, similar amounts for open space and budget reserve.
That's fine with me to approve.
Good.
Yeah.
That's now.
Yeah.
So Article twelve doesn't look like it requires approval then?
Doesn't require that, I don't see any recommendation required of the board. Um, then the remainder as zoning articles, uh, through yeah, through Article nineteen now. And then land acquisitions, this is a citizen's um, article uh, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to purchase the liberty mutual property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a funding source identified?
Um, at this point, no.
That article has not been fully baked at all.
Yeah, perhaps what we could do is we could ask, uh, we could ask the proponents to come before the select board at your next meeting.
Okay.
They have to go before, they have to go before the select board, they gotta go before capital improvements, they gotta go before appropriations. They've had a lot of, they have a lot of work to do before we go out and spend what would be, I would assume, a million or two million bucks on a piece of land, right?
Yep.
Has any, has any of that been done?
I would have, uh, just, Mister Kamalo, how do we get here? Uh, how do, how do we, is this a citizen's petition that went out and got a couple hundred signatures and, and um, and they're, they're trying to have the town buy the piece of property?
That is correct.
And this is that, uh, obviously the, the, the residual property left after the, um, um.
The Bermuda.
Yeah, so it, is this too? Like, if they, if the town was to buy this, would this, how would that, um, um, impact our, uh, that solar farm going on? I gotta put you on mute for a second, my dog's running into the road, hold on.
I think the intention is that this would prevent the solar farm, I think that's the residence detention, intention, but there's no funding source identified.
Yeah.
It's just a classic example of an article that comes before town meeting, it just has not been fully vetted by all the various, you know, committees and boards in town that generally look at these things in advance of town meeting. So I, I think it's gonna have a hard time, I, I would not support an article that hasn't been fully vetted.
So in theory, what would happen if this passed, but there's no funding source? Because we can't remove it.
Nothing.
Right, okay.
That's the problem.
No money.
Nothing there. Okay, so I, I'm, uh, you know, with this citizen's petition, I guess I am good with, uh, personally, I'm good with it, um, moving forward, going to town meeting. And if there's no funding and, and, and not, then, then it's dead in the water, but, um, you know, who knows what these, what these people can get done between now and town meeting.
So the funding, if it, if it, so tonight's vote is just, do we support the motion as written or the article in general, right? We, it can go, it's gonna go to town meeting either way. It goes to town meeting, it's just whether we support it or not. And if it does go to, it's gonna go to town meeting and, and let's say town meeting passes it, even though there's quote, no funding source, we're gonna find the funding source, it's called the taxpayers, and we're just gonna have to increase taxes to support that town meeting article that passed. Um, but I just, I, I'm not comfortable supporting the article for tonight's purposes because it hasn't been, I don't think anyone's gone to see capital improvements or appropriations or Concom, all the various organizations you would go to before we buy land, uh, open space, et cetera, that's, that's my thing.
There's no appraisal or anything on it.
That we know of, I mean.
No, no, yeah, that we know of.
So, yeah, I, I, I don't want to turn them down based on speculation, so, um, I would, uh, I would disagree with Mister Hurd.
In fact, in fact, if, if I may through the chair, at this point, um, I will recommend that the board take no action tonight. There is no specific motion that has been put before the board. There's only the article language, so we're going to continue talking with the sponsors and see if they can come up with a motion. And at that point, while hoping that this will be ready for the select board's next meeting, at that point, we can therefore perhaps put a specific motion that the board could consider, uh, before you.
Yep, I like that.
That sounds good, no action tonight.
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
I think it would make sense to also at, let the, let the petitioners, the folks who are working on it know that they, if they follow the process of getting in front of these other boards and committees between now and town meeting, the likelihood of it passing will increase dramatically. If they just walk in and say, well, we just don't like the idea of whatever it is, they don't like the idea of we wanna buy the land, that's a pretty tough argument to, to, to push. So we should, I think, Norman, I think you guys should reach out and explain kinda how it has to work, right?
Yeah.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Okay, similarly, uh, with the next article, street acceptance, like as the firms know, this is a subject matter that is happened before the board multiple times. Uh, there is, uh, a, a meeting that would be scheduled before the select board. Uh, it's one of your next meetings and Elaine, if you have that date, feel free to share that date now. Uh, therefore, I'm asking that the board take no action tonight until, uh, we go through that meeting.
Good with that.
Public hearing be September first and we should have a report from the planning board at that time.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with taking no action on that, board.
Yep, it's an important one, but we can wait till after the hearing, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, next article, administrative, changing or amending the charter of the town of Hawkington to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me, too.
Sounds great.
And, and then the last article, I think we also are waiting the outcome of, uh, the growth study committee's discussion later tonight.
Yeah.
So now may be the time for the board to, um, consider a motion that will, uh, approve the, or recommend for approval, uh, the motions that you just, you've discussed and acted on tonight.
I would recommend for approval the items that we discussed and agreed upon tonight.
A second. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So it's, it's moved and seconded, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, how do you vote, Mister Hurd?
Hurd, yes.
Miss LaFreniere?
LaFreniere, yes.
Miss Ritter Bush?
Ritter Bush, yes.
And Mister Tedstone, yes. All right, Mister Kamalo.
Thank you, um, I think we go back to the script, Mister Chair, regarding the executive session.
Mister Kamalo, don't we have to vote to sign the warrant?
Oh, yes, sorry, 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 yes.
So I'll request a motion to, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, Mister Kamalo, why don't you, uh, why don't you go ahead and read me, tell me what that motion should be?
Yes, the, the chair, uh, through the town manager is requesting a motion to sign the twenty twenty annual town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
But they said, even though, even though we're signing it, other, the growth study committee could remove their article, is that, is that in our motion?
We'll accept, through the chair, we'll accept that friendly amendment.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Okay.
So it's amended. Is that clear, uh, uh, boards could remove their own articles still, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
No, 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 I think post the vote of the board.
Okay.
Yes, that will not happen, this is happening because it's included in the motion which says the board will sign uh, the warrant discussed tonight, which may or may not include.
Okay, sorry.
From the growth study committee.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, uh, Mister Hurd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Miss LaFreniere?
Yes.
Miss Ritter Bush?
Ritter Bush, yes.
Mister Tedstone, yes. All right, so Mister Kamalo, is this, uh, this last item on there, the unforeseen agenda item, is that executive session?
Correct.
So we're gonna break from our, um, Google thing, Zoom thing that we're doing here and go to that, uh, go to the, um, Google meetings or whatever that's called?
Yep.
Mister Chair, so we gotta vote to move into executive session, Mister Kamalo, we would need a proposed motion for that?
Y- y- yes, and, and before the motion is moved, we need a statement from the chair that this is an unforeseen agenda item. Uh, at the time the agenda was put together, uh, we did not reasonably anticipate that there will be uh, conclusion of the DPW union contract negotiations, which happened, uh, yesterday, Monday, August twenty fourth. Uh, we did reach a memorandum of agreement and out of that agreement, uh, takes effect September first. Uh, and we would like to allow enough time for the union to ratify that agreement before that date and that's why we are asking the select board to get tonight.
Okay.
So with that understanding from the chair about, uh, unforeseen agenda items, uh, I would move that the board, uh, enter an executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Uh, that you will reconvene in open session at the conclusion of executive session?
Or know that we would adjourn following the, uh, conclusion of executive session. Uh, we would, well, we'll reconvene just to, at the conclusion of executive session, just to adjourn, therefore, we're adjourning now.
All right, so it's, uh, the, the motion has been made, it's been seconded, uh, Mister Hurd, how do you vote?
Hurd, yes.
Miss LaFreniere?
LaFreniere, yes.
Miss Ritter Bush?
Ritter Bush, yes.
Mister Tedstone, yes.
Yes.
All right, so Mister Kamalo, on our remote meeting script that we have here, I have the Zoom webinar and that is it, I do not have anything for a, uh, our executive session, the Google Hangouts.
I just sent, I just sent out a calendar invite.
Oh, I see it, okay.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, so I will leave Zoom and come back.
So we will leave this and we'll be back, all right, thank you. All right, so we have panelists. I see Amy, I'm sorry, Ms. Ritter Bush, Mr. Tedstone. Is that it?
Yep, no, yeah, no Mr. Herr or LaFreniere, yep.
So we do not have enough to close it at this point. Oh, I see Mary Jo waiting to get in. There's Mary Jo. All right, so I will request a motion to adjourn our select board meeting.
I'm moved.
Mary Jo, would you like to second, I'm sorry, Ms. LaFreniere, would you like to second that? Can I second that? Mr. Kamala?
I second it.
Okay.
All right.
I kept pushing the button and it wouldn't unmute.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. How do you vote, Ms. LaFreniere?
Yes.
Ms. Ritter Bush?
Ritter Bush, yes.
And Mr. Tedstone, yes. So thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.